People's water now.
I know.
All right, so I call the proceedings order for the 14th of October, 2024, 6:00 PM. Michael, would you do your indication for it?
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this beautiful country that we live in. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy. Pray for that guiding spirit to be with us here this evening as we discuss township business that we may make wise prudent decisions that will help those who live in this community. And as we say in the name of our Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. If you'd join me.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the precious justice throughout.
And Heather, if you would roll to the fore.
Last present. Kristi, here. Jeff?
Here.
E.
Absent.
Michael?
Here.
And Scott?
Absent. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Someone would like to make a motion?
May I motion for a adjournment?
Motion by Noah, do we have support? All support. Support by Michael, any discussion among the board? Very none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have approval of past meeting minutes since for September 9th, 2024. Do we have a motion on the minutes? So I make a motion to approve that.
There is a, there is something that needs to be fixed on.
Oh, alright, there you go.
It was pointing out to me that I spelled your last name wrong underneath the cemetery port. I added a J more to the end, so.
Oh, I went through this today and I never know that my team.
I meant that.
I became a grunge. Yeah, alright, so I make a motion to approve the ma- meeting notes, minutes, with just. Alright, motion by Michael, do we have support?
Sit down.
Support by Noah. Any discussion among the board? Very none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the treasurer's report. Anything special on that, Kristi?
Uh, you'll notice interest is starting to decline. They're now at four point nine, what was it, five point five? Well, we come back down.
So you have some straight exchange at federal level? Alright, we will put that on file. Next, we have paying the bills. So we did a question about this and different ways to format this report. Um, but the total is, is massive, it's $3 billion for the taxes, uh, property taxes come to the township. Large amounts of property taxes, a small percentage stays with the township. The rest passes on to various other entities such as the schools, the county, uh, et cetera, at different times. So in other words, at least one question on that. But do we have any? Any motion on paying the bills?
Motion to pay those bills.
Motion by Noah, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Kristi, any other discussion among the board?
I'd like to motion.
Yep, very nice. Very none, we'll call a vote, sir.
Noah?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the fire department reports, if you would, chief.
Thanks, sir. Uh, ninety-one calls for service last night. And it's about three and a half a day, which is going to force well over the thousand mark for the year. Everything has been winterized, we're ready to go for the winter season. Our response times are staying well below the national average. And for those of you that attended our open ops, we greatly appreciate it. Fault part nightly about four hundred and sixty-two hours. So I'm pretty excited about that. Uh, we went well, weather held up for us, so we're good, we're looking forward to next year. So, amen.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we have the planning permission report, Emily's absence. I'll read us two paragraphs here, this from September twenty-fourth, 2024. There was a light agenda for this meeting with only two discussion items, first being shipping containers as accessory buildings in residential districts, discussion varied from removal, the firm ordinance that restricts the use to a mix of ideas to make it more lenient, no proposed change at the moment.
Sure.
Number two, next was for review by the township engineer. This deals with an item in the ordinances that specifies the use of engineer on certain projects. Most bigger projects end up having engineers' plans made and should be followed. As the board would discuss different reasons for the policy, we further discussed not being overbearing with extra fees that applicants would have to pay. Next, we have the planning and zoning report, if you would, Steve.
Uh, September saw a steady number of permits with twelve being approved in the month, uh, three of which for, for new houses, three for accessory buildings, two for decks, two temporary use permits, one addition and one fence. In regards to enforcement, ten cases were investigated, two cases were closed and one as a citation pending, but partial compliance has been obtained, so we are following that to make sure that cleanup continues. And I also, in regards to professional development, in September, I attended the Michigan Planning Conference. I attended some sessions that I believe will give me a better understanding of planning and zoning issues that the township faces. And I look forward to implementing that in the future.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we have our parks and recreation reports, if you would, Michael.
Uh, we had a meeting on Monday, September twenty-third. Um, we ju- I won't take Justin's thunder on his report, I let him do the maintenance report. Uh, we did discuss, and these numbers may not be absolutely accurate, but our, our budget current year is about thirty-nine thousand that we have available. And that ties in with the decision item, we talked about a playground uh, equipment at Beagle Park. And two options were picked, uh, the first one would be one, and we'll discuss this later, so I won't get into a lot, but the first one would basically be covered by that thirty-nine thousand. The second one would be significantly more, and we'd have to go in next year's budget to cover that, so we'll discuss that more later. Uh, finally, discussion items, we talked about the bylaws for the Parks and Rec uh, committee, and that is in the works, and further will be discussed about that. There was also a brief discussion about a skate park at Beagle Park. Uh, but that was tabled for now because of the playground. And then our next meeting is Monday, December twenty-third.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we have our maintenance and grounds reports, if you would, Justin.
I can't give enough credit to the crew, they've been doing a great job. Our Beagle Sports Park, we had to remove the old place that, and um, had, that can be discussed later today. Repaired some shingles at Pavilion to fix the roof leak. We've graded the park not a couple times, seems like people love doing donuts out there, so that's fun. Um, we had ordered some polyester flags, had replaced the American flag at Beagle, at Beagle Field. Had the vitalpa, or being maintained. Um, at Talpa, we did some still on your sign. To let people know what park is. Questioning parks been maintained, bike paths, we had trimmed alongside sad bike path to keep, um, uh, good lines visibility. Transport stations been maintained, for Lake Cemetery, we had replaced all the veterans' flags and American flag as well. And we had done two rounds of leaf cleanups already. Oakland Cemetery did leaf cleanup last week. And Town Hall, we replaced the sign out front, as well as the American flags and paint fire hydrant outfit.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we have our cemetery reports, if you would, Heather.
So we are in the process of getting the roads done in Lake Cemetery, but they actually are getting done there. Um, when I went out there last week, they have done the framing of the road, but they haven't put the gravel down yet, so either that is getting done or it's already done, so. Um, and then there was a survey of Oakland completed, um, which was the part that it needed to be done for remapping. Um, and then it looked like Gel and Act was going to come out and possibly remove some branches that were concerning before snowfall. Um, and then I put in here a little note about, uh, the team because of switching positions and coming right into elections, I have not been nearly as hands-on as I was last year with the cemetery. Um, so if it weren't for Justin and the, and the maintenance crew, a lot of this stuff wouldn't be getting done, so very thankful for them. Um, and then just some information about plot sales and stuff up there. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we have our visiting official and candidate updates, and we have a lead line.
Kim Seer was County Commissioner for the North Country up here in Dalton County. I am running for office, in case of, if you weren't aware of it.
Well, a report from the county. Um, this, uh, this past month, we had a, a groundbreaking for the Southeast Regional Force main, uh, which is a, a pipe that starts at the wastewater treatment, uh, plant and then goes, or wastewater treatment area. It's going to roll all the way up to, uh, Hooverville. And, uh, that thirty-inch, uh, pipe is going to carry affluent from, uh, uh, different, uh, companies, agriculture is one of the largest industries in our state, with West Michigan home to numerous farms and processing facilities. Uh, some examples Swanson Pickles, DeVries Meats, Applegate Dairy, uh, Fairlife and Continental Dairy, all of these are going to be, uh, accessing that pipe. And, uh, with that, uh, enlarged affluent flow, it's going to add, uh, there, there several of these said it's going to expand their business substantially, so there'll be some growth going in there. Excellent, airport, uh, let me read this real quick, in concurrence with the April sixth recommendation of the Muskegon County Board Commissioners, the United States Department of Transportation has selected Denver Air Connection as Muskegon's next essential air service provider. The Colorado-based airline is offering twenty-four weekly flights to and from Chicago O'Hare International Airport using Embracer fifty-seat regional jets, with service beginning November first, 2024. Uh, this announcement marks a significant milestone in Muskegon's long-awaited return to reliable all-weather jet service. We had somewhat less than reliable jet service from Muskegon for quite a while now. So this, uh, we, they toured these planes, these are, uh, new engine jets, uh, you know, you just fly across the lake, we don't have to fly around anymore. It's, it's going to be a great improvement. And, uh, the other thing was the, uh, local food access and production resolution. I worked with Jeff on this thing and, uh, a lot of work, he did the work, I just presented it to the, uh, to the commissioners. Uh, but finally, we got, uh, we got that thing passed, everybody, uh, everybody worried for, for when the individual was gone, but it's probably a good thing, so, uh, so that's passed, and it's, uh, I just, uh, want to give Jeff kudos for that because he was, uh, he worked hard on that, so. He's, he's been looking at it for a long time. With that, I have to go, I, I have, what, six-thirty, oh.
Thank you. Commissioners here, any other visiting officials or candidates? It's time now, I put that in there just because I know this time of year, I remember years ago, that I would want to get up early and run off. So next, we have our public comments, on any agenda items up to three minutes? Any public comments? Nope, alright, we'll move on to decision items, the first one, which we've heard about a couple of times, uh, Beagle Playground Equipment. So the basic idea is that in option A and in option B, we're go fast by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. So that is their vice, which, which is their purpose. And option A is for Antelope Canyon, it's a specific playset, it's a little bit smaller, a little smaller numbers, uh, as far as that goes. And the idea, as Michael hit on, is to fit it into the budget numbers that we have now. Uh, with Justin having decided to forego a tractor, uh, which I know he has debated since, uh, when he said to lift and move some heavy stuff. Uh, but nevertheless, with, with the finances the way they are, we fit those numbers into this year's budget. Under option B, which is for Play Lab Brewster, is more expensive, and so Michael mentioned taking up the budget for next year for the parks. Now that's at the board's discretion when the budget is being made, and so that's a decent direction to go, the, the board can obviously just increase that, the board can also decide to decrease that when the budget season comes around. Uh, but the idea there for the benefits of option B, the more expensive one, is that instead of an eighty percent matching grant, you have a hundred percent matching grant. So it stretches the down there a little further, right? Those are, those are the basic arguments, uh, behind each one. And so, and then there's going to have to be some funds expended for site preparation and restoration. Justin, as he mentioned, is already torn, torn down, the old playset, been leveled out decently well, uh, but not fully, some things, uh, need to be finished off, uh, and then we'll have the restoration after one of these goes in, if one of these goes in. So we have the breakdown of the finances here, uh, the matching grant does not go for, doesn't count towards the installation fee, uh, or the freight. But the numbers are broken down, so on the small one, uh, the subtotal is forty-four thousand, general numbers, forty-four thousand dollars, the grant is fifteen grand, the freight is two grand, the total that we owe is thirty-one thousand dollars. Um, the larger one, subtotal is ninety-eight thousand dollars, the matching grant's thirty-seven thousand dollars, the freight is three grand, the total that we have to pay it being sixty-four thousand dollars. And they include adoption A and B together, we did not ask them for that, I think it's their version of upsell, but because they sent it to me, included it, so that people have all the information. So either do we have a motion, or do we have a discussion among the board?
I was looking into both options earlier and kind of wrote down some pros and cons. Um, so pro with the, um, Antelope Canyon one. Initially, I wanted to do the more expensive one, because I was like, well, that kind of makes sense, you don't get your most bang for your buck, you're getting, you're, you're getting more amount for in the grant. But with it coming in under budget, that means that we don't have to try to finagle money, like, move more money into there. Um, so with the smaller one, it still covers the same age range, so they both cover five to twelve years of age.
Yep.
Um, it's still pretty, pretty decently big playset. Um, and then.
You talk to the antelope.
Yep, the smaller, the smaller one. And then, uh, Justin had kind of mentioned too, there are some things that we could do like on the sides too, that are other features other than this playset. Um, that would be low cost, so, um, I think that's, was kind of the, the pros, cons, are you getting the most bang for your buck with not being able to get the full hundred percent in the, in the grant. Um, and then having to potentially add more stuff to it later. Um, the approach, the other one, is that it's one and done, like you're putting the playset in and you don't need to do anything else, like, everything's there, that's massive, so.
So the cost difference between the two of them, one and done, but then adding on two.
Yeah, we would have to exceed the budget for this year and then potentially go into some next year. Next year. Yeah, we would have to possibly do the installation in the next budget cycle, so.
Yeah, because we still have to fully pay for the equipment in this one, otherwise the, the discount doesn't count, right? So for the matching grant for that, so we need to cut a check, make a quarterly adjustment if we.
Before the end of the year.
If we went larger.
This is to receive the full grant funding and check of twenty-one, um, and some, some extras there, but we don't have to pay the full thirty-one to get the grant.
On the small one, on the larger one, we need to cut a check for forty, right?
Right.
So right now, there's nothing out there for the children.
There's nothing, and what we have out there, even is nothing there, so. And, and we, there's lots of information out there about why it's important to have parks in your community. Um, I pulled out some information too, from the CDC and the state of Michigan, and, yeah. With a portion of our population, almost twenty percent of our population being minors, like, how do we service the twenty percent? You know, big matter too.
Well, my opinion is it's wise to stay in budget. I mean, I, I would love to go with the bigger unit, but I don't want to burden next year's budget.
Exactly.
And that ties us, you know, we're tied down to this for two years.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So.
I agree.
So the discussion coming to a motion?
I make a motion to approve the purchase and installation file. Antelope Canyon. At Beagle Sports Park.
Alright, motion by Noah, support by Kristi, any other discussion among the board? Very none, we'll call a vote.
Michael?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the senior village snowplowing. So we've done snowplowing over the last couple of years, and this is a huge debate among municipalities, uh, that they tried to figure out for, for a while, uh, on, on exactly what to do with this. The county budget did not line up with the fiscal year, and so we're having issues with our paperwork now anyways, alright? So some of that has to be sorted out. And, uh, last year, I didn't make a call to every person on the list, I did the year before to follow up with it when we started the program, uh, to make sure that it's actually being done, follow it up with, and that type of thing. A couple of people did not like the fact that some of the blades had caught a little part of their grass, that type of thing, very difficult to avoid with snowplowing as well. But otherwise, the reviews were pretty good. Uh, so this is that same type of proposal, and Chris is here if we have any questions specifically about the snowplowing program.
If there are no questions, I'm going to make a motion to approve favor of senior village funding to living board for snowplowing for the twenty-four, twenty-five winter.
Alright, motion by Noah, do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by Heather, any discussion among the board?
It's a great thing.
We'll call a vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
There you go.
Motion passes. Next, we have the RU resolution. We talked about this before, it's not over a current disagreement, uh, so it's essentially to prevent a future, uh, disagreement. So this is for the planned unit development that we end up approving in the business park. And we're on the same page with the county, everyone's good there in that this is how the calculation should be done for this. It's just not obvious that it's in writing, uh, anywhere else. And so, uh, last day requested, have something there, and I figured, rather than me making up some sort of contract with them and signing it, it should be something that goes to the board and is a, a board vote to hold there. Um, it's essentially, well, the calculation essentially a point two RU's, which is a residential equivalent unit for each one thousand square feet of floor area, um, but there's a minimums floor area of five thousand, um, or it's one RU.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for assigning residential, uh, equivalent units for the planned unit development on the Hyrum.
Motion by Michael, do we have support?
Alright.
Support by Noah, any discussion among the board? Very none, let's go call a vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Kristi? Michael?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have FOIA resolution. So in this came out because right now, the township has for retirement funds, John Hancock, but in the past, they hand FOIA. Now, no one that was here at the time is currently here, which means that no one can sign for it if one of those previous employees needs to move something with those accounts. From what I understand, they're supposed to be transferred over, but there's still some money left in there. So ideally, the clerk and treasurer, uh, Heather and Kristi, would be able to sign on these, they currently can't. This will remove the past people and allow them to sign.
Make a motion to approve the resolution to designate authorized plan representatives from FOIA financial.
Motion by Noah, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Kristi, any discussion among the board? So we're switching to FOIA? We are not switching, so we're keeping everything the way it is, this is just for the previous employees that still have some activity in the financial institution. We can't sign off on them doing anything with their accounts right now. Alright, very nice.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else? We'll call a vote.
Michael?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have building department admin. Amy is in the audience, uh, she's been doing this for quite a while anyways, working on, sorting out, uh, the building department, the paperwork, and there's, there's a lot to go, uh, with that, and there's a decent, there's some things we, we can't fully sort, it has to be managed. Uh, and so I'll basically go through on here that it makes sense for a few different reasons. One is to incentivize employees, uh, to take up these types of roles. And continuity ends up being a big thing, obviously, we have an election coming up, things are going to be, being switched over, and there's going to be some change there. Uh, and ideally, all of that's not getting shifted, uh, every time you're having an election, uh, I mean, it somewhat does. But by designating in this way, the board has designated someone for that position, if the board chooses someone else at some other time, obviously, uh, the board can do that. Uh, but hopefully, we, we stay with some of that continuity, there's some incentive, uh, to make that occur in the non-political, non-elected positions. So this one and the next one are similar, this one's specifically for building.
I make a motion to approve Amy Brown as joint project building department admin.
Motion by Noah, do we have support?
All support.
Support by Michael.
We're going to discuss, uh, pay for that?
Uh, yeah, we can discuss pay, so what I've proposed in here, and this is in the quarterly budget adjustments, because the quarterly adjustments would have to be made, um, is a dollar per hour to go with that position, right? So if it's switched over, something like that. Now, in the quarterly adjustments, I have written there for one thousand dollars, we're already half of the year, half of the fiscal year in. Uh, and so next year, it obviously would have to be around closer to two thousand dollars, um, around that way, but this year, they would both have to be one. So I haven't written in the quarterly budget adjustments, but there's a thing on election payroll that I missed in quarterly adjustments. But these are written in there like that. Alright, where do we end up on this? Motion and, and support, that was the discussion, any other discussion among the boards? Very none, we'll call a vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
And Heather, yes.
Motion passes. So, and the nice thing about building is we can pull that out of the building funds as well at this time, on the budget side of things, FOIA is different, it's not part of the building. So the next thing is the FOIA coordinator, same type of thing. Uh, now, obviously, Angie is newer to the township, newer to, uh, the road, she's also here. And FOIA ends up being a big deal. It, it's one of those things where it shouldn't be an issue most of the time, it's, I mean, if people ask me for information, I just give it to them, it's not a huge deal, except for when there is a hassle, and it is a huge deal. Um, and so it's, you know, similar, uh, as far as that goes. And because I think it makes sense, uh, we kind of, we kind of, whether or not we discussed this earlier, have a cemetery coordinator, uh, the board has designated Heather as that. We didn't fully separate it out as much as this, the election coordinator has been talked about, but a little bit, but did not determine from the year. So these are essentially, as far as I can see, like the four roles, that makes sense to kind of cut out of that, um, and, and hopefully minimize some of the potential, possibly, probably, political fight, uh, that is going to occur. So this specifically does that for FOIA.
I make a motion to approve Angela Craig as joint project FOIA coordinator.
Motion by Noah, do we have support?
All support.
Support by Michael, any discussion among the board? Very none, we'll call a vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Yes. Michael?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
And Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the quarterly budget adjustments. And so for a lot of these that are written in the reasons here, I don't have an adjustment for the sale of assets, because the sale that we did to Levenman, uh, three of the parcels did not go through the title search, so the title company will not insure them, which will obviously fluctuate that number quite a bit, uh, if that sale either goes through or doesn't go through. So an adjustment will have to be made, uh, there later. We have the FOIA coordinator and the building admin as one thousand each. Uh, the education for the treasurer, Kristi pointed out, was supposed to be brought up to five thousand dollars to match the clerk at the beginning of the year, but was not. Uh, I did miss something in here, Heather pointed out, under elections for salary, uh, and she has about eight thousand dollars left. That's not going to make it, it, it was under budgeted at twenty thousand dollars, uh, for the year. And so she would like to raise that to thirty thousand dollars. So that's under the department two-six-two, uh, the salary positions, twenty thousand to thirty thousand for election workers. And as far as you know, that's probably the only change we need to make to this, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have the adjustment for the backup generators, because we had not budgeted in, the board proved that, so we have to make, uh, the adjustment as of now. And to move, uh, some money under the road, instead of being under general road maintenance, it's under gravel, no big deal there. Other, the largest of your seniors for three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, and that was the ARPA funds that we designated for the road commission contract with the county. Uh, that was to come in over four hundred thousand dollars, so they made a decent amount under budget, uh, because we contracted with that, it should roll over to roads, um, for next year, but the funds, the funds for now will remain, uh, with. um, for next year, but the funds, the funds for now will remain uh, with the township. Uh, we have to sort out the senior village money, which this adjustment basically brings it up to breaking even. And it depends on when the bills go through uh, from the snowplowing and safe seniors. If the township decides to do that in the spring for uh, next year. A couple of the utility things um, are a little off. Heather was looking at that. She thinks uh, the way we are doing or placing the mortgage on fees, um, looks like it probably accounts uh, for that. Um, Allen has a minor adjustment in the fire stuff. You already, it's it's moving something. It's not increasing or decreasing anything. Just between two lines, um, a couple of adjustments uh, in cemetery stuff. The other you'll see for the road funds, in in one section, we bring in the revenue of three hundred and sixty three thousand dollars, technically three sixty three, three seventeen. At the same time, we're spending it. So and I did check with the auditor and lawyer on how we should run those ARPA funds. And it should be brought in as revenue and expense at the same time when it's being expended. Um, so that is the point there. I adjusted for penalties um, on some of the sewer fees in here. Our bond principal payments um, for sewer were a little underestimated. I think I just moved over the stuff uh, from last year, which was eighty nine thousand, five hundred and sixty three dollars. It should be ninety four thousand, four hundred and sixty one dollars because uh, we received benefit bill. So that's that adjustment there. And that brings us to the conclusion.
And also just to clarify, when it says election salary, that's paying our election workers, not like a salary that I'm getting, so that everybody outside.
I make a motion to approve the quarterly budget adjustments as proposed.
Uh, with the increase of election salary.
Yes, with the increase.
To thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Alright, perfect. Roll call by Noah. Do we have a support?
I support it.
Support by Heather. Any discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Heather, yes. Michael?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have our discussion items, financial oversight. We discussed having the CPA firms. We had a few of whom quoted, Manor Wooden quoted until I worked through it. Uh, I just emailed them yesterday to see where the update is on that. I know they've been cranking through things. They they've got a lot of stuff done. They've had access. Um, so we haven't completed it as of yet. So we will quote it after that. But the CPA firms come in high. And so we had discussed as uh, as the board potentially having individual uh, do that. The auditor had mentioned Jessica from the city of Muskegon, Jessica Rib. It works over there. Christie had reached out to her. She would do it for seventy five dollars per hour. She's available on Fridays. She is willing to make a report that would go to the board on a monthly basis. Uh, so it is a viable option. Uh, so I know we're discussing two board members, but if you kind of want to get uh, the direction to go on this, if we want something more formally written up for one of the CPA firms, they they have no problem putting together contracts. Uh, if we want to assign something uh, with them, or we can get something more like a formalized quote, instead of just at this point, we just send emails um, with Jessica, uh, or we can look at other options.
Like Jessica's. I like that idea. That's going to save us a lot of money and it's going to keep up with things.
Yeah.
So that we don't get in trouble. She proposed she could either do reconciliations for us or she can just oversight just to make sure those things are complete within that office. And then provide a report.
Right. And there'll be some, there'll be some uncertainty there, like for a little while on exactly what the situation will be. So, but either, yeah, we we either need error reporting, uh, potentially in either case. We need error reporting coming to the board uh, so that things can be caught corrected, if they're going uh, off base. And then hopefully we have a fairly short feedback mechanism. Uh, or potentially just some education there, depending on how how the rule goes and gets filled. So, and I I included that uh, the letter that was sent out, so that a bunch of people that inquire got, uh, this was actually the version Christie pointed out when she looked through it. Um, that does say the wrong political party. Uh, but I did correct that, alright, when I, when I had read through it. And so the version that actually got sent uh, sends it correctly.
Right. The only thing that I would think to be a possible, well, I guess not, but one of the concerns that I would have is that it is another local municipality. And so that is bringing in some, like whatever contention or strife that we have within, leaking that out into other parts of the community too. So, cause she does work for the city of Muskegon. So that's another, like, is that something that we?
Yeah.
It's true. Yeah. Whereas you have a CPA firm, I mean, like when we work with Manor or Brickley Long or something, they're, I mean, they're a large firm. They really don't care about us. Right? So, which is a little bit of like detachment, uh, kind of this, this third party, um, our, our we, same thing with the audit as we're doing now. They're like, we will get you. You're you're on our list. Um, but you're not the, not the highest priority. And so you get that with a big firm, which there can be a downside to that, but you're right, there can be an upside to that of you're not getting someone local that may be involved, uh, kind of in the political scene behind, behind scenes. So there's a case to be made for that, for sure.
But then she'll be here on Fridays, right? When nobody's here?
Well, the hours that were held before weren't always like, I'm 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 here on Fridays too.
Oh.
So.
One of us will be, if she, when she's here, one of us will be.
Right. Yeah, I think that the only concern with that is the, the level of accountability. Like we're already going to have to, as a board, hold if that does happen, have all people accountable for not doing things. But then it's like adding on top of it, this isn't coming from a company. This is coming from another person from a municipality. And then now they're telling us that you're not doing things and we have to hold you accountable. They have to, this person has to hold selections with, you know. There's just a lot of cross, so that could potentially not be, not be great. I mean, I love the price tag.
Well, if we, and I'm, I'm not a lawyer, of course, but if we have a contract drawn up, there could be a confidentiality clause in there that says, you know, what you see and hear here is kept here. And if we ever found out that it went somewhere else, that would null and void the contract.
We could definitely like ask her, uh, I mean, with the, with her being at seventy five dollars an hour, it would be worth asking our lawyers. That's something that we could draw up.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, something like that can definitely be drawn up. So that's a real possibility. Yes. Okay. So kind of push on something formalized on this more cost. See what, see how the paperwork actually busts.
Protects everybody involved, including that person too.
Yes. Sure. Sounds good. We're up to our second board slash public comment. Would you like to come up? Let's know what they think. Anything?
Let me just start on. So thank you, um, for saying about to post the notes at the library if anybody is already getting a ballot at home or somewhere else. We'll have them posted at the library. And that just, um, my name's Rachel Church from local library in Fulton Township Ranch in Twin Lakes. And we are having a survey right now. So we want your two cents. If you do not already use the library, well, you especially, we want to hear from you. I know why. What would you like the library to see? Um, just like everybody else doing rebranding, sometimes you have to pivot and do different things. We've done a lot of new things in the last few years besides having a lot of online services, like ebooks and audiobooks and movies and magazines and and just the things I can't even, I couldn't imagine twenty years ago. That with the library could have available, we have available now. And now we have, um, not just movies, but we have video games and we also have board games people can check out, take home. And you can check out text. You can check out metal detector. You can edit. It's, it just blows my mind what we have. And if you would like to see more of those kind of things, definitely, definitely. Fill out one of our surveys online. Um, or if you don't have online services, come in and talk to one of us. We could help you fill out some paperwork and we'll send it in for you. It's your library. We are here to serve the community and we want to do what you want us to do. Does anybody have any questions for me? That's all we're here for. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I know, right? I was like, what?
Anyone else? Who wasn't looking for a motion to adjourn?
Looking to adjourn.
Do we have support? Support, support by Michael, support by Noah to adjourn. Any discussion among the board? Or not, all the papers say are. All votes.